Go ahead and call the meeting, the study session meeting for order, May tenth, our spring study session. Madam Clerk to do the roll call, please.
Assistant Secretary of State Harry Arlen Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary of State Robert Ewing.
President.
Vice President Arthur Perry.
Here.
Director James Cymarman is Lynn Lee.
In trends that we hope.
In trends that we hope. And President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments? Uh, Dale? Do you want to wait till... Oh, you want... No, go ahead, I'm sorry. I looked at the wrong member.
President Schaefer and members of the board, I... My name is, you know, it's Jim Mosher, and I had a non-intend to comment, but in the interest of efficiency, if I can start to comment with a question. Has the board ever adopted something called a local hazard mitigation plan?
Scott would be able to.
Yes, uh, we don't, um, WeRock does that for us. WeRock does that. We do as a regional, um, organization, so the Water, uh, Emergency Response of Orange County, which is a regional organization that represents all water, wastewater of Orange County, they prepare the hazard mitigation, and we are part of that program.
Good. The reason I was bringing that up was the Newport Beach City Council is tonight updating their plan, and the resolution was mentioning that every city, county, and special district needs to have such a plan, although in the fine print, they don't actually have it to qualify for grant funding. Certain additional money you have to have on. But it's...
Yeah.
Can we ask some questions? Newport and then?
Newport and then WeRock. Yes, yeah, but they do their own hazard mitigation because they have their own emergency plan system, so.
I think from our financial and experience, it's safe, we're better off not having to do a lot of...
It's a lot of work, too.
It's a lot of work.
We just need resources, so it's good to have WeRock take the lead on this.
Exactly.
I think we should have, um, something noting our code find, you know, we have, that we can use.
We check with Al, I thought we had already done that.
Um, I'll... Sure, I'll check.
Very good.
We must have a rule policy or procedure.
Yeah, that's a very good change.
Formalizing. Not publicly known.
Okay, item one, organics.
Have to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Well, it looks like it's getting in the right... It's going back down.
Oh, move approval. Do we have?
No, it's just for permission.
Thank you. Item two, code enforcement.
Mr. Roberts?
Uh, good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, for the month of April two thousand sixteen, total nine scavenging investigations. None of them were proactive, none of them reacted to complaints. Uh, routine, nothing out of the ordinary for the first seven. Uh, I listed the additional two in a little paragraph for the benefit of the board. Um, under Scott's direction, myself and our code enforcement volunteer, uh, went out and did a early morning directed patrol in the north end of town near Southwest Plaza, Pollo Reno Corridor. Uh, during the course of the directed patrol, uh, we encountered one vehicle that was scavenging in a commer... It was a multi-family residential, you know, apartment building out of bins, kind of out of the purview of what code enforcement does here. However, uh, we followed them. It was vehicle-based, uh, we didn't engage, you know, we didn't want to cause them to want to flee the scene or anything like that and hurt someone, so we just kind of parallel them, made our presence felt, and kind of escorted them out of the city, and which he did, left with no incident. Uh, the second instance was in the Mission Mendoza area apartment building. Uh, early morning hours, we encountered a female. By virtue of the two of us being male, early morning hours, dark, uh, again, we did more of a, what we call a burnout, you know, make our presence felt, lights, brights on them, didn't get out of the car to engage, just so there's no perception of impropriety or anything like that, so, again, mission accomplished, uh, she left the area with no incident. Uh, I did chart the, uh, on the report, we've changed the format a little bit, I've implemented, uh, the addition of Google Maps for the benefit of the board, so you can kind of get a an idea of where the incident took place. And one of the attachments to the report also has, uh, just an overview, again, for your benefit, of the concentration of scavengers. Again, primarily in the south end, you'll notice about seven of them in the south end, uh, one on the east side, and, uh, those two that I listed, uh, that were in the north end of town near Southwest Plaza. Moving from, uh, scavenging on to trash cart enforcement, uh, for month of April, about seventy-nine, uh, cases, contacts made with folks regarding, uh, trash containers. Uh, per the direction of the board, I was told to concentrate in some of the alley corridors around, uh, Baker, Wilson Street, uh, which I have been doing, so. Bless me, ma'am.
Thank you.
Um, so I spent a lot of time just parked in there, walking the alley, seeing what I can find, so we have a lot of apartment buildings in that area. Kind of difficult to identify whom the trash cart corresponds to, but most of the time, you'll find somebody. That concludes it for me.
Question?
Yes, sir.
You noted here that you had weekend enforcement.
Yes, sir.
What day of the week is that?
Uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, did I... I stipulated weekend enforcement, where, sir?
Early morning on the first page, early morning or weekend enforcement.
Uh, that would be the, uh, the report I provided the board, sir, regarding the additional scavenging activity.
You did that.
That was the early morning, yeah, it came in about four-thirty in the morning, and, uh, that's where we're out there. Uh, most of the scavengers operate under the guise of early morning hours to avoid detection or interaction with the residents.
I just wanted to comment, good job, and I like the idea that you went all over.
Certainly appreciate it, thank you very much, ma'am.
There was a lot there.
We have the one, it's storage of carts in public view, those are still people leaving them on the street.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's not just... Because I know I have a couple neighbors that keep them right up against the... I mean, they're... You can see them when you drive by, but...
We try, sir, de minimis rules, you know, if it's egregious, it's addressed, if it's something where the letter of law versus the square of the law, if the resident's making a reasonable effort to screen out a view, we try not to be too invasive. If it's complaint generated, then of course we'll address it, but, uh, try to focus primarily on the ones that are clearly out on the street or on the driveway or something like that.
I have a question for Scott.
Yes.
Wendy Lees, you know, two weeks ago, had that same problem near her house, I think the city enforced trash management, remember? She said that they're always leaving them out, and we were going to make contact with the city about it.
If they're, yeah, if they're, if they're, if they're dense, we're...
Yeah, correct.
Yes, and we make contact with the city.
She just wanted me to know that it's still happening.
There's like bins out of multi-family that get rolled out to the city.
Certainly, I'm familiar with the complaints that Lisa has.
Are those bins, are they?
They're commercial bins, yeah, everything's, uh, for the most part in relation to the apartment buildings which have, where one of the competing waste dollars.
And she just wanted me to know that it's still happening.
Okay, for sure.
I'll see her on Thursday.
One additional point, sir, um, on the corner of Eighteenth and St. Street, there is an apartment building that I, that I contact regularly. It's, uh, it's not really the landlord, it's a revolving door of tenants, the folks coming in, it caters to younger folks, so you'll see, they'll get on the plan for a couple months, comply, you know, maybe up to a year, and then there'll be a new crop of residents, and, uh, you know, they'll come back out again, so just, it's maintenance. We'll, uh, we do contact the landlord and hold him ultimately accountable for the actions of his tenants, but in all fairness to the guy, too, we, uh, we try to, you know, notice the tenants, so they, they know what the complaint is.
Again, there's always a relative.
Right.
See if you can be careful.
Yes, sir.
Well, it's, you know, I'm breaking, every time I go by and open up, I lift up, I look at my head, it goes by my mouth.
I don't take anything out.
See that in the report anywhere, really.
He wants that into the record.
Yeah, Mr. President, as you heard from Ed, that we believe, uh, majority of the scavengers are operating in the cover of darkness, and so, uh, Ed and I are trying to work out a time where he can spend dedicated a couple of weeks working at four-thirty in the morning at dark, and see what kind of activities are really out there, and then we'll present that report to you, and I think we're going to see if he was like...
Yeah, I think you... I... Is it dark at four thirty?
Yes, it is.
Do we have any evidence?
Not yet, uh, most of them, uh, I'm sorry, uh, with the influx of folks coming in here onto the Nineteenth Street corridor, we have a purely rotating group of folks that come in and out. Most of them are advised during the course of my contact that next step will be law enforcement, citation identification, and law enforcement interaction, most of them, that dissuades them.
Yeah, sure. Always, always good, I think.
Hey, sir.
Um, okay, let's move right to breathing, let's use control.
Thank you, Mr. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, it's, uh, as you know, one of our strategic goal is to reduce our hot spot location, I think to less than thirty, I think is the new goal. And for the public information, hot spots are wastewater sections that are wastewater areas that need, uh, more frequent clean. Instead of once a year, they're cleaned two times, three times, sometimes even four times a year. And right now, we're down to thirty-eight hot spots, we once, we had ninety-eight, we're down to thirty-eight, and most of them is pretty much grease-related, uh, and deal with the restaurants. And every, every three months, uh, myself, uh, Rob Hamer, the district engineer, Joe Jenkins from E C, uh, Steve Condon, who's also here, our wastewater maintenance superintendent in our cleaning crew, we meet every three months, and the cleaning crew reports to us what they find when they're, after they've cleaned the line. And a lot of times, it's grease, and if it's heavy grease, which we're experiencing like on Nineteenth Street here, um, and a lot of it's because the restaurants don't have grease interceptors. And the reason why is because they require them to put in, not requiring to have one when the, when the board adopted the fog program. What the committee came up was, is, is, when we're pitching this to the board today, to have a discussion, maybe establish a program similar to SLAM, where we can provide some monetary incentives, um, or assistance to, uh, the family-owned type, um, businesses or restaurants. We're not, we're not talking about the corporate restaurants like, um, you know, D J's or, um, you know, the McDonald's, Marie Claire, if I'm one of the, the family-owned restaurants, especially along the way on Nineteenth Street, maybe, uh, we can offer them assistance. So I directed Joe Jenkins from E C to develop the program, which he's going to give you a presentation, he's also giving a report, uh, that's in your staff report. I do want to mention in that, in that report, you'll see some highlighted in yellow, those are kind of some good discussion points if you want to have today, or we can bring it back at a later time. But my recommendation right now is to hear Joe's, uh, report, and then, um, answer questions and give us directions to where you want to go.
Joe, you ready?
Yes.
So he's going to do criteria to it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Scott. The introduction, thank you to the board for allowing me to present today, so I just wanted to give a little bit of a background about kind of how we got to this point. Scott did a pretty good job of describing it, so I won't go into too many details. It really started back in two thousand two, when the, the state Water Resources Control Board issued their waste discharge requirements, uh, basically requiring all sewer agencies, well, in two thousand two, it was regionated, but eventually two thousand six, rolled out to the whole state. But the gist was stop having so many sanitary sewer overflows, develop and implement sanitary sewer management plan or an S S N P, and part of that plan was develop and implement a fog control program. So when the district implemented their fog control program, the first thing we did is went through and identified all of the food service establishment, who has what type of cooking equipment, who has what type of grease control device or grease interceptor, and just put them all kind of in a database. And then for any new facility coming in, or facilities that were undergoing remodel, required them to put in a grease interceptor to help control their grease. And as Scott mentioned, uh, board developed a committee that went and identified the hotspot areas and worked to reduce those hotspots areas and those sources. And so, any existing, uh, food service establishment without a grease control device, they were issued what's called a conditional waiver, conditional waiver permit, which basically allowed them to operate as-is, as long as they stayed compliant with their kitchen best management practices, they didn't have any modifications, additions, alterations to cooking equipment, there's no change in menu, facility name, facility type, and then, and most importantly, there's no evidence of significant fog accumulation at their lateral, they're not causing or contributing to that system. And so just some stats on this, currently, uh, the total existing F S Es with no grease control device at all, there's three hundred and seven, that's about sixty percent of the total F S Es in the district. But in hotspot areas, we're talking about about fifty-nine, Scott mentioned, we're down to about thirty-eight hotspot areas, so there's just a handful in there that still don't have any devices. And potentially this year could require immediate installations of up to twenty-six facilities, if, because we're starting to be more proactive and requiring retrofits. Scott mentioned Nineteenth Street is a very good example, it's essentially from Monrovia on West on Nineteenth Street all the way down here to Harbor Boulevard, it's just restaurant row. Most of the F S Es, F S Es in there don't have grease, any grease interceptor at all. Okay, so really there's three or four or so that have one, but the majority of, um, are high grease producers, don't have any equipment, and you've actually have done a lot of CCTV work in the line, seen a lot of fog accumulation in there, sometimes the crews have to go out there and clean it, like immediately to prevent sewer, uh, sanitary sewer overflows or backups. So it's a location that's kind of high on the priority to address. But requiring installation of grease interceptors, either grease traps or gravity grease interceptors, as a common is expensive, it's a, it's a big burden on these facilities, especially, as Scott mentioned, the low-income mom-and-pop type places, so you can just see some of the general costs, uh, that's kind of a wide range, there's a lot of options, but for the, uh, grease trap, like the one in the picture, we call them the passive units, because they don't have any wiper blades or heaters or anything like that, you can find them on the internet, maybe slightly used for around five hundred bucks, all the way up to a brand-new plastic model, it's around twenty-five hundred. The automatic removal devices range in that twenty-five hundred to five thousand range. Um, and then when you go to install them, for an above ground, you're looking at another thousand to two thousand dollars just for pulling permits and plumbing costs, or if you're going below ground, you could have to reroute plumbing and there's excavation cost, so it's a little bit more for these. But compared to the gravity grease interceptor installations, which is their larger concrete vault units, it's much more expensive. Um, we, E C does do grease interceptor installations as part of our, our, the services we offer, and so we've been finding units in the seven thousand, seventy-five hundred, eight thousand dollar range, uh, for the smaller size, seven hundred and fifty gallons, but you can see them range all the way up to fifteen thousand gallons. New construction, usually looking at between twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand dollars for the installation, but really what we're talking about here are the existing food service establishments. So they could be looking at, thirty-five thousand dollars is actually a really cheap for an existing place. That means all your grease placed lines are already separated from the sanitary sewer, little indoor plumbing stuff that needs to be done. Really the average that they're looking at for an existing facility is around fifty thousand dollars or so. And that's if you don't have any unique conditions or any complications, you're not relocating utilities or doing de-watering around the footings, because the groundwater table is high right there. So you'd be looking in that, that fifty, seventy-five thousand dollar range, as long as everything's, is kosher. So, as Scott mentioned, because it is a burden to these facilities, but we do want them to put in something, uh, the district is proposing, uh, this grease interceptor assistance program, calling it conceptual at this point, because as Scott mentioned, there's still a lot of decisions that need to be made. Um, we're talking about loans, potentially up to fifty thousand dollars, that's a risk the district is going to have to take on, and so we want to make sure that the program is hashed out and worked out before it's implemented. Essentially, there'll be two types of assistance, either a grant up to twenty-five hundred dollars, or a loan up to seventy-five percent of the installation cost or a maximum of fifty thousand dollars. So we'll talk about one in a minute, but first, um, there'll be some qualifications that the F S Es will have to go through, basically to make sure they qualify to receive a loan. So there'll, there'll be maybe a net revenue that cannot exceed a certain dollar amount, um, I'll decide what that revenue should be. Um, but essentially, the G C D cost installation could potentially cause permanent closure of the facility. You don't want to require the facilities to do something that would cause them to close their business, it's not very business-friendly. Uh, the F S E is not a new construction or undergoing a remodel, so essentially, the district has identified them, they're existing, they've identified them as discharging excessive grease or revoking their conditional waiver, that's kind of the conditions here. And then the F S E will submit a justification letter, basically proposing why they should receive assistance to recover. So... So for grants, as I mentioned, it'd be a maximum of twenty-five hundred dollars. The intention of the grant is for, is for the facilities that are installing grease traps, mainly indoor grease traps for the three-compartment sink only, or maybe adjacent sinks if they're close enough. And we think this will be, um, a lot of facilities qualify for this type of installation, this type of grant. Um, or it could be a temporary H G I with agreement to install feature gravity grease interceptor, um, that's, that might be some situations there. Uh, but essentially, the, the, the design has to be approved by the district, uh, before it can be, uh, granted. And they have to agree to the terms and conditions of the conditional waiver letter that we already, um, give to the facilities who are installing hydro-mechanical grease interceptors instead of gravity grease interceptors. So for the loan, uh, as I mentioned, it'll be up to seventy-five percent with a maximum of fifty thousand dollars. Um, this is for a grease control device connected to multiple sinks and drains, and so it could be a hydro-mechanical grease interceptor that's maybe outside, in-ground, that just has multiple plumbing going to it, because you're still looking about the same installation cost, it's just different as far as purchasing the unit. But basically, the property owner and the food service establishment has to agree to the maintenance terms, and I'll get into that here in a minute, maintenance, because the property, the loan will be issued to the property owner and not the facility. But again, the design has to be approved by district staff, and the property owner provides the scope of work, lease contract, terms, and everything, and makes the main, their justification. So more details into the loan terms. Loans would be issued for a five-year term, they'd be either zero or low interest loans. Uh, the loan payments would be assessed to their property tax bill, so you guys don't have to hire new loan sharps or anything like that. Um, and then any loan balance in terms needs to be disclosed, be disclosed as part of the real estate transaction if they do, if the new owner, if they try and sell their business or sell their property, that way it doesn't get lost on the payroll. So essentially, the property owner would be responsible for the loan, not, not the F S E, that way the payments can be assessed to their tax bill. So just so you get a sense of the program funding, of what it might pay, what it would be projecting if it made costs. Uh, projected grant budget, we're thinking fifty thousand dollars, that would provide grants of twenty food service establishment, one grant per, per food service establishment. And projected loan budget is five hundred thousand dollars, that, that would provide approximately ten to fifteen food service establishments pending available funds, again, one loan per F S E. And so to break this down, and as I mentioned before, we have potentially twenty-six facilities within the next year who may be required to install grease control devices of some sorts. Um, I believe thirteen of those are based on their location and the type of equipment they currently have, what we know about them. They would be required to put in at least a hydro-mechanical interceptor for the three-compartments sink, so they would, they could qualify for grants. But then, um, potentially, some of the F S Es that we would require a gravity grease interceptor, maybe it'll make a case where they could install a hydro-mechanical instead of a gravity grease interceptor, so it could have six additional, uh, additional F S Es that could also qualify for it. And that could be because maybe they're doing the contemporary H G I with a feature, promise to do a gravity grease interceptor, maybe there's spacing issues or slope issues, engineering restrictions, they can't put in a gravity grease interceptor, or their kitchen waste can be captured by one device. And again, loans, uh, looking at probably between seven on the low and high on the end, and thirteen at the six. It could be less. And so if there's, it all depends on, you know, available funding for the program, you know, how, how much are loans and grants going to end up being, so it's just kind of a ballpark issue. So that's kind of the gist of the program, again, there's more details in the report, there's a flowchart in there, too, so you can kind of see the process that we go through. Um, some considerations, too, that I did mention in the presentation, is just an extra burden on, on district staff, um, to do the evaluations, issue the grants and the loans, either, you know, who's it going to be, is it going to be Dora in there, or possibly Wendy, you know, just to throw someone out there, so, uh, those types of things would be considered.
Could you talk briefly about what other agencies have this, or where you've captured some of this information?
Sure.
Thanks, Rob, that was my question.
Yeah, and so we, we did do an evaluation, um, and you know what, I did bring...
It's in the staff, it's in the staff report. In the staff report, there's a list of agencies that have similar programs.
There, there are, uh, agencies that have done both loan programs and grant programs that we looked at and kind of evaluated the different, um, policies that they implemented and how they did it. Um, one that we work with a lot that comes to mind is the City of Orange, um, did a loan program for a while, and so on. Yeah. So I can, I can just kind of go over them right here. So the first one, City of Portland up in Oregon, they, they have a very aggressive program where they were proactively requiring existing facilities, whether they were causing problems or not, to put in grease traps, so they, they instituted a low-risk loan program. City of San Juan Capistrano has a grant program they use. This is a facility out in Illinois, uh, an absolutely, I think, Elgin.
Pardon?
Uh, Dana Plumage has a grant program. Yeah. But I think, um, all of, what all of these programs have in common is that they wanted to protect their sewer system from overflows, but also they wanted to still be business-friendly. You know, they want, they don't want to put their facilities, um, out of business by, they understand the expenses that come along with this. Um, Gene, in City of Orange, when I spoke to him about his program, he said he really liked the program, they just ran out of funding for it, and now they don't do it anymore. But he said it was, it was pretty helpful for, to get some of their more, more problem food service establishments to kind of, it's not...
I noticed, Joe, in all of these, it looks like Elgin was the only one that targeted a specific area.
Mm-hmm.
So they must have some kind of similar, we have a food, a foodie area.
Yeah. Uh, every, not every, um, sewer agency will call their locations hotspots, it's not, they don't, like, it's being politically correct, it's meaning you have a problem. So they'll call them our target areas, our accelerated focus areas, you know, something like that.
That sounds less politically correct than a hotspot, but...
Um, but yeah, they probably had, they probably had maybe a very large shopping center, in a small city, you might have all of your facilities in one downtown strip area, and so, if you make all of those go out of business, it's going to be very public in a small community.
How many hotspots would this program eliminate?
Um, eliminate is, is tough to say right now, but I...
Or impact, back...
Twenty-plus.
At least twenty, yeah, as Scott mentioned, we have thirty-eight remaining hotspots, and I would say at least seventy-five percent of those are grease-related, where...
How many was this, how many, so Nineteenth Street, I guess I was thinking of Nineteenth Street.
Yeah. So the thing about Nineteenth Street, I think they're cleaning it quarterly right now, right, Steve? Yeah, and so, I mean, you at least could move that from quarterly to every six-month cleaning, nine-month cleaning, something like that, you know, these would, um, help with, you know, leave some of the stress on district resources. Because there's are some locations where they're at nine-month right now, and maybe an F S E putting in an interceptor could help push that out to annual, so we'd have to look at exactly how many would we do, so... Yeah, certainly would help.
And we were focusing on Nineteenth Street here. What about Best Food Road on Harbor Boulevard, I mean, although they're, they're all fairly new, so I assume they all put gravity systems in when they built those, is that right?
Yeah, and so, North Harbor Boulevard, all of those facilities have grease interceptors. Um, I, I can't think of any major producer in there, and the good thing about that area, too, is it's a very large sewer line, because it's near, near the Orange County trunk line, so you really don't have fog blockage issues in that area.
That's, that's a good point.
Yeah, but all of those have grease interceptors. And even, um, all that are in those shopping centers, there's property-managed interceptors in there as well. So you're looking at, really thinking about kind of the older areas of Costa Mesa, Nineteenth Street, but also Seventeenth Street on the wood side, too. There's a few, there's a few shopping centers in there, we have multiple facilities that don't have the devices.
I mean, uh...
Yeah, I do, um, out of curiosity, would this be open to the whole city as far as whatever restaurants? I, I couldn't, I didn't read anything here where it was, you know, subject to a certain area.
No, it'd be, it'd be open to anyone within the district service area.
Okay.
And so anyone who the district basically is revoking their conditional waiver could qualify for this, but then, again, we'd have to decide, is it only going to be for the low-income mom-and-pop type facilities, or are you going to open it up to all facilities that was applying?
That would go into your criteria, how you establish that.
Yeah.
Also, then you would, would you vision having some flyers made to give out to all these people that, you know?
Yeah, possibly, I think it'd be something you could mention, usually when you revoke a waiver, you, you send them a letter saying, you're presenting the evidence, there's the CCTV images, here's our inspection, this is why this is happening. But in the letter, you can mention the district has an assistance program, if you qualify, you know, it could help, you know, you can put it in there.
Yeah.
You know, and then, um, there's other facilities probably, too, who, you know, could potentially be causing problems in areas that you could reach out to. Where this is going to help is in shopping centers, where you have multiple F S Es, where you have other businesses as well, because having them go in and put in a concrete interceptor means all of those facilities, you got to separate out their plumbing. Cause having them go in and put in a concrete interceptor means all of those facilities, you gotta separate out their plumbing and connect everyone. And so they're, really the best for them is to put in hydro mechanical grease traps. And then, and so the property owner or something who works with the facilities to get these traps in, maybe even like a temporary basis.
Okay, and the ones that you, um, put down here as far as having this program going already. Who is monitoring that program?
Uh, that's a great question. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure who actually monitors the program issues out. I would assume the fog program manager is, is part of it, but then when it comes to funding it and issuing the loan and following up on the loan, it might be some other building department or building force department. So there, there might be some interdepartment communication at work there to make sure it works good. Certainly in larger agencies, there's more of a interdepartment work that needs to happen. And the smaller cities, it's usually like one program manager who's overseeing everything.
So the city of Orange discontinued, simply cause they ran out of money?
Yeah, essentially, yeah, and I, I think, um.
We know that too, don't we?
I think one of the issues too in Orange is it's, it's an older city and so most installations that have to happen there end up being expensive. And they're mainly just issuing large amounts of loans.
Yeah, I, I am a little concerned money wise on what's going on because.
I think that's probably gonna be a topic of getting just a minute, so.
Cause we have so many things going on right now.
We like have a public comments and I'll need you to fill out one of those.
Okay, about this topic?
Yeah, if you want to speak.
One, um, one thing we might recommend is to do like a pilot program. You know, where you could offer it to select few FSCs just to see how it works out.
But that's still money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
It's just we have so many irons in the fire right now. And I'm just thinking that we're gonna add one more. It, it sounds like a good program and something well needed, but I almost see it down the road, I, I, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I fully understand.
I have a question for Rob, you know, cause he mentioned put it on the tax bill. How would, how would that work for us?
I have a lot of comments about this.
I, I think it can help. But we're here anymore, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for a public comment and then we'll come back. Now.
Thank you, sir.
You do have to come back.
Okay.
Three minutes.
So if the time starts in a minute.
Thank you, um, so I've been in this industry as well, I've inspected restaurants. I used to work for the city of Huntington Beach prior to that, in Pearl Beach inspecting restaurants. So, um, I understand what Joe is saying and I just wanna point out too that the gravity grease interceptors are causing issues. And Rob is also aware of that. If they don't get the proper flow and everything, then you can have odors and things occurring at, so that's something that is not as optional or optimal. I guess of the, um, bringing something directly in the kitchen that can take the grease and it doesn't even hit their sewer lateral. So that would be something that the property owners would want to address too, that they understand that it could impact because fog is very corrosive. And so you don't want it in your line, but they don't want it in their line either. And then, um, I also had a question, um, I believe I gave Rob the cash for kitchens. Um, it was based on a conservation type thing, but West Basin has done it up in there that they were working with restaurants and kitchens in their service area. And they offered them, um, things to reduce water conservation for like sprayer water brooms, faucet aerators and control valves and things. And I believe that they did it in conjunction with CPUC. So there may be an option too that you could, um, talk to CPUC if there's some way that you could tie it in because it is energy efficient. And that, um, it's reducing things, you know, with the sewer and the energy that's taking, you know, and, and doing that part. Um, it can also contribute to the creation of renewable energy because they are taking fog now at several of the wastewater treatment plants. And through anaerobic digestion, they're actually doing cogeneration at the plant. And powering the plant without having to take power off the grid and then any renewable energy left only will be put onto the grid for other people to use. And then again, it could be looked at as a water conservation effort too, because it's like the indoor type model, so.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public, and we'll go back to directors. I, I think it's a good program, um, I don't like helping, but as a business owner myself. When I started my business, nobody offered me any assistance. I, I mean, I paid burning myself. Um, and I'm, I don't, I don't mean that flippantly, I mean, I. The SLAP program has been so good, but it's been directed at the people that we serve personally, you know? Something like this, I, I, we're opening it up, going to businesses. The loan, the loan thing, I'm not sure I wanna see the district get into loan activity. I, I, I have some difficulty with that. The assistance thing, I could maybe massage that into my thought process, but the loan part of it. If these people wanna open a restaurant, there's a cost of doing business and this, this should be a cost of them doing the business, not us. That's just my humble opinion.
This is not, this is not for new businesses, this is for existing businesses.
I understand, I understand.
This is for businesses that have been around for a long time, getting grandfathered in for the fog program.
I, I, the one thing I'm very appreciative of is, there's no way in my thought process, I would ever want raising, I would wanna help raising kings, for example. So I, I really appreciate the fact that this would be the mom and pop. Uh, but again, I think that opens up some criteria problems that we, we could run into, you know? Your idea of a mom and pop might be different than our ideas of a mom and pop, so anyway. Miss the board, Rob.
Well, and, and I think we need to get some additional focus, you know, I asked how many hotspots this would, would impact. Of the thirty-some, how many are grease now?
Uh, you, you, like, like Joe says, seventy-five percent, so, you know, you're, you're looking at what, um, twenty-nine, thirty of them are on grease.
And, 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 um, you know, I think we need to get some focus on, I, I'm not for the loan program either, but, uh, we need to help the FSCs that are directly contributing to the problem. Um, directly contributing to a hotspot. We need to limit it to them. And, um, you know, I, I appreciate the staff's work to date, but I don't think we have enough information yet. So the, the twenty, the twenty-some hotspots have X number of FFCs, uh, F, FSCs or whatever they're called. And a certain number of them are, are causing problems. And if we eliminate the problem or half eliminate the problem, you know, we only half eliminate the cost. And we don't know what the cost savings is. For the crew to clean a hotspot, I don't think it's very expensive. Uh, we have two crews, you know, and I, I don't know if, you know, what they would do, how they would become more productive. If they weren't, if they didn't have to attend to the X number of hotspots. You know, we're looking at, trying to eliminate eight maybe. There's still a lot of information, and I think we're in the information gathering stage, but, um.
Um, I'm sorry, you're next.
That's okay.
It was one of, one of the jurisdictions, I think it was Orange, that required them to take out their garbage disposal? Oh yeah, city of La Palma.
That's pretty much a, that, that was one, one of the first rules of fog management, out goes the garbage disposal. So they're not allowed in any, any restaurant anyway.
Okay.
So never, never, never.
Wouldn't we do that in homes? Is that what I could convince the person I live with with the garbage disposal really isn't like any person?
And actually be good if you did.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I'll end up in a truck.
Um, I'm probably going to, um, be in trouble later.
You, I think you probably are already in trouble.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure so. In for a pound.
He has a beard.
Okay, well, so, um, a couple of things. First, for a grant program, well, for both of these programs. Okay, there's literally, let's just analogize this to the SLAP program. The SLAP program is sure we give out money and sure there's some finance time for processing the paperwork and then we're in-house and that just adds to our workload. But like with the SLAP program, you know, there's also contractor time. And so with this program, this would increase either Rob or, um, EEC's time for, and cost for, you know, reviewing these people's plans and doing all that. So there's that which never kind of gets added to the real cost of the program. So we have that now with the SLAP program, that's just that nebulous. And I'm assuming like the SLAP program, that these people's, um, permits and so forth would be waived and their inspection costs would be waived. So that's an added cost, but we, you know, with SLAP, we do capture that right now. So we know how much we're giving away in free services essentially. And so, um, so there's those type of things. Um, say it was just a grant program like SLAP, okay, that's much easier to monitor. Um, you know, it's consistent with SLAP, but it's still a lot of time and, you know, effort to do that for the in-house staff. Um, and depending on the budget of that, um, I'm assuming like SLAP, it would be a annual amount set aside. So that's, you know, we would have to find some money from somewhere. We're pretty much the, you know, we have a little contingency and stuff, but we haven't seen the reality of our, um, full staff budgets in a couple of years, even though we're in a new budget cycle. You know, we've cut down some things, but now we've got a second crew, we're gonna have a CCTV in-house, you know? So we've got some things going on that we haven't really seen, you know, how tight our budget is gonna get. And so a program like this, you know, I'm assuming that it's fifty thousand dollars or something for grants per year. Like the SLAP is two hundred per year, that we could make that happen, um, if the board wanted that to happen. If you're talking like Orange's program where it's a five hundred thousand and it's a one-time seed. Where you seed it and then you, you know, give out the grants, first come, first served. And then you can't give another grant until people have repaid a portion of their grant. So you may, you know, you may like Orange, you know, have five hundred thousand, you gave it out in one or two years. And now you're just waiting for people's repayments till you have enough to fund one more grant, you know, two or three years down the line. And so that's a lot of, you know, time and effort and, um, fifty thousand is quite a bit of money. So, um, I think that that's a different thing. The only way I see, just off the top of my head, that's where I'm getting in trouble, away from people, is we would have to take money from CIP. You know, that we just don't have this in our operational budget to do a lump sum funding like that. And then like Orange, it would probably go away rather quickly because a mom and pop with a fifty thousand dollar, you know, added on to their property taxes is, you know, they're probably, it's only gonna be a thousand dollars a year or something like that, you know? So you're ducking a really long time, you know, for this person to pay, you know, or maybe two thousand, you got it down to twenty-five years. You know, while none of us will be here. So that's kind of a, you know, you kind of gotta wangle that issue with it. So, um, you know, you may not have funding for any more loans, it may just be you help those initial parties and then it kind of, the program dies off naturally by itself.
Doesn't that kind of tie to what Bob was saying with targeting the ones that really are the issues? If, if we did that, if, if we had more information on the ones that really are causing the problems, we targeted that. And the other thing from funding, um, city of Datapoint. They implemented a program, Joe, with South Coast Water District? It says.
South Coast Water District is the, is the wastewater provider, so not the city.
Oh, then South, that city Datapoint do their own.
So, oh, South Coast Waste, South Coast Water District provides the water, wastewater service in Datapoint.
Okay, I should, I should have learned. Um, that would give us an opportunity though to partner with Mesa Water or, um, city of Costa Mesa. Don't look at me like that, I'm just thinking out loud.
Okay.
I mean, so, I mean, there is that potential. I mean, this is a business entity program that we're talking about and the city is the one that issues that business permit. So they have a direct relationship with these people for permitting.
I would have to say that the city probably would not be interested, like water would not be interested because like in this example with the one down south. You know, they're water, so they're doing a utility fee on that for their sewer, so they've got invested interest.
And I think, I, I think I really knew that.
Yeah.
But I mean, there is that, still that specter out there that can be done.
Yeah, I'm opposed to the loan program, but I think we should have a trial program set aside like fifty thousand dollars. And then we hit four, five or six, what's it cost, Joe, for installation and a trap outside, like five thousand dollars or seven thousand dollars?
If it's above ground, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I think you said earlier it was like twenty-five hundred dollars.
Twenty-five, twenty-five, they'd match twenty-five and then we help them with the installation, up to like five thousand dollars each. And they can do ten of them roughly, as, as a trial program and then see if that makes a difference in some of the hotspots.
You, you could actually pick a hotspot and say that hotspot is so bad that we're gonna focus on that.
That's what I have in mind.
And then go in there and try to take.
That's a Bob chain.
Instead of district.
Yeah, yeah, we, we picked the spots on nineteenth street, for example, as a trial. And have some money set aside there, if, if they're willing to match up, you know, we put in twenty-five hundred, they put in twenty-five hundred.
But does it make sense then, and I guess Scott will ask you, to, to come back with identifying the, those particular ones? And let's look at the ones that really need, I mean, Joe, you know, you probably at the top of your head, you know who we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
I mean.
It's kind of why we're here is because we've been trying to lower all the hotspots and we ran into, okay, now it's, what's left? We did structural, we did all these other things, now it's grease.
Yeah.
So what are we gonna do next?
Well, I think it makes, and if it's gonna affect, if this particular area we're talking about affects twenty, twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Right.
We've pretty much taken care of what we need to take care of.
So in our, in our sub community meetings, there's basically two main hotspots we're just focusing on. One is the one right here on nineteenth street, the other one is seventeenth street, I presume, so. So those twenty-six fall kind of between those two hotspots. And there's like a handful, maybe five facilities that we know of in the district that are just constantly causing problems, you know? And, and one of those actually was resolved recently, that Old Scotts seafood now is the water grill is pointing in multiple grease interceptors.
Oh, it's not good as well?
Cause they're doing a remodel now.
Yeah.
So they would have been someone who we would have looked at in this program, even though they're a large facility.
Scotts seafood place had that much grease. That's just, I mean, supposed, I mean.
Have you ever eaten at Red Lobster?
Oh.
Fifty percent butter.
Look, I, I mean, look at me, I eat all over the place, come on. So I, I, I think that's what I'd recommend, if you, if you guys can come back to us with identifying who and where is something more focused, like Bob said. Then we, we.
Great.
But I, I think you get the sense that, I don't think any of us really like the loan program.
That's fine, that's, that's what we're hoping to say. Meaning is to get your, your feedback and your comfort level, level. So, uh, we, we'll come back with a, um, proposal of a fifty thousand dollar program. We will, um, we know like Joe says, nineteenth centuries are, are, are the hotspots we'll focus. We'll come back with those, those restaurants that would be eligible for this program. Come up with some criteria, we'll also come up with some cost savings and what that means as far as savings or maintenance goes, we'll, we'll bring all that back to you.
Does it make sense to talk to those businesses or do you wanna wait?
Oh, I'll wait to see what you think about the program.
So we can offer some.
Yeah, once, once you, if you, if you wanna proceed with a pilot program and, and, um, put in fifty thousand dollars, then we'll go out and reach the, the restaurants. Is that seem reasonable, financially?
Um, um.
You said, you said, you said, you mentioned that figure a little earlier.
I don't know, I was gonna ask what you asked. Um, do you have any money in your budget? Is this something you could, you feel passionate about and could pick up?
I would suggest that you try to limit what you take from maintenance, maintenance is where.
I think we take it out of CIP, yeah.
I, I guess.
And we're, we're gonna talk about that some more, you know, with one-on-one, so there's, there's plenty of money.
Yeah, yeah, exactly right.
Mr. President?
Sir.
From a CIP standpoint, I think we're doing very well. I think we're on top of where our replacements are. We do four or five projects a year, that's great. As the system's getting older, it's the, we need to continue to think that we're gonna have to step up more maintenance as the system gets older. We got calcium in the pipe, we have other problems, we have roots in the pipe, we need Steve's guys, we need TV. So I really look at that, the older you get, you need to do more maintenance, kind of like a car.
Or a person.
Right.
Well, I think that what I was asking him was that he's got some accounts and due to the change in staffing and, you know, contracting versus not. That he may or may not have some funds that, you know, he didn't expend this year, that. Okay.
Because with, um, Costa Mesa not taking through our vehicles right now, you know, it's. it's spending a lot.
Yeah, we have a lot left in there. But I was thinking, so we may just, we're not taking away from what he, he would never, you know, deplete his resources so that he couldn't do his work, but there might be some, because we're at the end of the year, it's actually kind of a better time to do it than it is at the beginning of the year, because you never know what's gonna happen, so you don't wanna say, oh yeah, we did, we'll, we'll make this happen. So now's a good time and we may be able to do it. But there may be a project or two where he comes in under budget and-
We can always find some dollars in CIP.
So, yeah, so I think it's-
Who's taking care of vehicles right now?
We're still working on that right now.
Okay, because we talked about that private firm.
I'm sorry, we're looking at, we're looking at using like a move mechanic to come back and, um, maintain it at our yard. I need to, we put out some, we put out some bids, no one, no one responded back, so, um, I'm just gonna reach out to, there's a couple I know of that, um, reach out to them, give a price.
Did you contact the authorities?
Yes, and it was, there's, you know, their fleet's so small, and it was actually their suggestion that they're actually letting them do the moment.
With the CIP projects?
Do, do we have a lift at the yard?
No.
The CIP projects, do we have a third on last year? We have a hundred thousand dollar savings thing.
A lot.
I don't know, but you haven't been built.
So we're clear direction, thank you.
Okay, I don't know, the Waste and Recycling Coordinator meeting, they're taking Elizabeth's on giving the report?
Elizabeth and Gina was gonna do the report, but she, she said, I'll draw your point, so I'll, I'll take a stab at it. Uh, so both Gina and Elizabeth from our staff attended, uh, the recent, uh, April twenty-first, OCC Waste and Recycling Coordinator meeting, and they had a, a few guest speakers, or, um, presentation, one, Jesus Perez is the new coordinator for the House of Waste Program, and we're gonna be gearing up to have our, our, um, collection event at OCC in, in the fall. So we'll be, according with Jesus. Mallory Burden gave an update on eight, eighty, eighteen twenty-six, uh, that's where cities have to submit their mandatory organic recycling, or commercial recycling, um, and it's due on August thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. Then you have Debbie Kelly from JR Associates, uh, presented Fix-It Clinic, I guess it's a new program that they're, um, reaching out to organizations, uh, that guide persons through the disam, disamortizing process. Don't know what that means, but-
What do they disassemble?
I have no idea. Um, and then Lisa Kitting's from OCC Waste and Recycling, um, announced the importation agreement, uh, I'm, from my understanding, has been approved by the board, by the County Board Supervisors, uh, which means, uh, we should be getting a check from them probably in the fall for about seventy-six thousand dollars. And I remember we, we signed that agreement, all the agencies in North County had to agree to it. Irvine and San Francisco were the last holdouts, but they came, they came to terms, and I believe the Board of Supervisors have, have approved that, the agreement. So that's nice, a little additional money to, uh, to the, to us. And then they talk about AB forty-five, which is, uh, another House of Waste bill, uh, it was amended, no longer requires jurisdiction to, to mandatory, to other recycling programs, and this one has been opposed by SWANA. That's it.
Um, let's get over something. The agenda on here is different.
Yeah, I know, it's up there.
Um, I, before the CRNR guys, you're probably gonna leave after this.
Yeah.
Can I, can I, I'm gonna take the liberties to bring item B, five, step five, yeah. Oral Communication Director's comments, I'm gonna bring up something, cause they need to hear this.
Okay.
Um, I had a constituent come by my office yesterday, and she and her husband are helping their neighbor who's a hoarder. And this lady had had some medical issues, and when the fire department showed up, they pretty much said, you got a problem inside, it's happened twice. So this person and her husband volunteered to go in and clean the place out, to help them. And they had bags and bags of trash. And for our partners down there, I can't see them, or they still-
He's hiding under the-
I know. Apparently, CRNR will charge eight dollars to go pick up these bags? Is that right, Dean?
How many bags are there? There's more than thirty.
There were a bunch of them, like probably ten or twelve.
Well, they, they got, they're up to thirty, that's, that's their large item collection.
Yeah, I think, well, but, well, anyway, so they have these bags of trash, and they were told that on your regular trash day, we'll pick those up, that there's an eight dollar charge. So this lady paid her eight dollars on a credit card, and they didn't get picked up on their regular trash day. So they called back, and CRNR said, we'll be there next week. Okay? So they got picked up, but CRNR ended up refunding her eight dollars backdoor on her credit card. Then they sent her a check for eight dollars, and then they billed her for sixteen dollars.
I thought they got an accounting issue with their CRNRs.
Was I? I didn't know. Um, these people were trying to do a good deed to help their neighbor, and she was a little hot.
Yeah, I, I can imagine.
Lawrence, Dean, she's been talking to Angel?
Okay.
Is there an angel?
I, I think-
Other than you, I mean.
I think there may be in customer, in our customer service, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get an address, if we get an address, then I'll certainly make sure we take care of it.
Well, whoever Mrs. Schlutz talked to said, write void on the check and mail it back to us. And she said, why should I spend fifty cents to mail this check back? So I have the check and the bill, if you guys wanna look into this-
Absolutely.
And maybe, my thought process was-
We'll, we'll, we'll take care of it.
Maybe help her out with the hoarder with like a complimentary bid or something?
Does she still have more, does she still have more?
Yeah. But if you guys would just look into that, I'd really appreciate it.
Well, normally what we would do is, we would tell them that they're entitled to large item pickup, and then because, if they're a neighbor, then they could use theirs on the same day and just, you know, do it that way, that, you know, they should've, they wouldn't have to pay anything and-
Well, I'd never heard of this.
Between the two neighbors, and if they went around to their other neighbors, they could say, hey, could we use one of your large item pickups and get, you know, some items out in front of your house? And, you know, it's, it's actually, well, because we've had people do this before.
I, I had never heard of this, eight dollar things, that's why.
Well, we, we don't have an eight dollar thing, that's-
That's right. Well, when, I hate to say this, but the resident said to, I think, again, Angel, well, I know Mike Schaefer, he's on the sanitary district board, so I'm gonna go talk to him. And whoever the person on the other end lines is, well, that doesn't make any difference, we're two separate companies or something like that, but, you know, trans, lots of things get lost in the translation, so, I appreciate you guys looking into that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We should have some thought.
I gotta use, that would've been worse.
No, it'd been free.
I do it all the time, and I don't have any problem.
Thanks, guys. I really appreciate it.
Seriously.
Okay, then I'll, I'm gonna move out of item number five. Um-
So thank you, Mr. President. So, um, this is the, the results of the ADHOC Committee, which consisted of Vice President Perry and Assistant Secretary Schaefer. They worked very hard on reviewing all our policies, including our administrative regulations, our operations code, and our employee handbook. And, uh, this is one of the requirements, uh, that the board needs to review all our policies to, in order to, um, submit our research application, distinction with CSDA. So this is the process we have to follow through, so you'll see, there's a, um, eleven-page or ten-page, ten, eleven-page staff report of all the recommended changes or the comments made by the committee, and so if the, um, board pleases, I can go by, or the committee wants to, we can go by each, each item and talk about it, and it's up to you how you, how you wanna proceed.
I'd suggest that, you know, that they inform us of the ones that we ought to know about, and most of them are procedural or administrative or typos, you know, those kinds of things, so I'd limit the top five.
Okay, I've got the first one. I got the first one. You know, we, when we reviewed these, we didn't know that they were in the codes, and like, we, I didn't know that we really had a petty cash fund, so you wanna address that? It's on page twenty-five on the, on the third, on the third page.
So our petty cash fund is, um, limited to a hundred dollars maximum. Anything greater than a hundred dollars, they must submit the receipts and we'll pay it through AP. We keep a cash box in our safe, I'm the custodian of that. Um, we replenish ourselves, usually Caitlin will process the replenishment and cash it at the bank. Um, we have a hundred dollars in our, in another, um, till that we make change out of, in the, um, for the customers that come in, so that's separate from the petty cash, but we sometimes have to use our petty cash to break, you know, people's larger bills or make change. So petty cash is anything that's less than a hundred dollars, and it does have to be signed by the individual and their supervisor. Then when the entire petty cash packet is going for replenishment, um, which is about monthly, then Scott will review it and sign it in the normal AP process, and I will review and sign it in the AP process. But if I replenish someone's cash, or Caitlin replenishes someone, you know, who went, had to go buy lollipops for a giveaway or whatever, then, um, we initial, each of us initial whoever gave that person the cash. So we're always balancing and, and replenishing. Does that answer it?
Yeah, that's good, cause we just, we didn't really know you had a petty cash fund, we had other board members-
Well, I think what it does is, if, like she said, if someone has to pick up something real quick-
Yeah, I agree.
Rather than submit a reimbursement, write them a check and just make it light.
Yeah, I agree. Let me do a couple more, and then Arlene can do a couple. On, on page eighteen, it's on page four, excuse me, page four, on the operations code eighteen. Uh, the committee wants to bring this back to the board for discussion regarding term limits for the board officers. Uh, right now, I think it's like two years, but I was suggesting maybe we review that on a case-by-case basis, and maybe make it a one-year so that we can rotate through a four-year term with at least four presidents. So that was just for discussion, that's why I brought that to our attention. And then, um, I don't know if we wanna talk about that now, or do we?
I, I, I think you want us to bring that back to a, a study session before, before the-
Yes.
There's actually quite a few codes you'll see in the staff report, that the, the committee wants us to bring back in the study session, like one, my friend skipped over, was, um, page eight, section one zero six zero three, it's on page four, your staff report, administrative citations generally, um, uh, the committee wants the board to review this section during the study session meeting, so, which is about just, um, you know, issuing administrative citations, we can, we can mail those out if we, if we need to, but, uh, the committee wanted just to discuss that in the study session, and we can bring that back, no problem.
And then, I've got one more on the operations code, page five, page twenty-four, so page five of the eleven, page twenty-four. Review the section of upcoming study session, make any changes they feel are necessary. How do we get, basically get an item on the agenda? And I think we've-
Yeah.
Can you speak to that? It's, it has to come through the president for approval?
Yeah, it's, a, a couple of years ago, the board established procedures, it, uh, from memory, the, um, the board member technically has to go through the, the board president, and the board president consults with me, to make sure that we have the staff time to, um, do that research, prepare that staff report, and then it goes on, goes on, just sort of, there's some procedures to follow, you know?
Okay, I just wanted, okay, then, the last one for me is on the employee handbook, it's on page seven, and then page twenty, excuse me, forty-five, page seven, and then page forty, forty-five. Time cards, core hours, and adjustments.
Yeah.
You know, I didn't know how we go about, you know, how the time card works.
We, um, about, I think a year ago, we changed back, we were using ADP as an automated time card, it was very cumbersome, and it doesn't, it didn't flow into our Springbrook software. So we went back to, um, paper time cards that show our FLSA weeks and our starting and end times for each, um, individual. So each employee has a spreadsheet time card that they put their time in, and it calculates for us, and then their supervisor approves that. Um, overtime has to be approved ahead of time, except for in the sewer department, if someone's on standby, then that's, that's a form of overtime that's on their cards, I can email you a copy of what their time cards look like. So they put in their standby time, and then if they actually get a call out or a phone advised, that would show up. And so they have a page where they note exactly what happened for the overtime, it was a spill or whatever, and then that's reviewed and approved by the superintendent. And then all time cards are, once they're approved by their supervisor, um, so mine goes to Scott, Maloney's goes to Scott, Ed's goes to Scott, then once they're all approved, then we input them into our system. Part of the reason we bought the, upgraded the Springbrook last year, and we, um, bought the ESS module, is it has a time card system in it, but we've had some difficulty with the, um, the internet interface with the yard, so, but eventually, what I'd like to do is get the, um, the time card that's in Springbrook, at least for the exempt employees, the non-hourly, to use that time card, so that we wouldn't have to input that back into Springbrook, that it would just automatically flow in as a batch. But pretty much now, um, any adjustments or anything like that are reviewed, you know, during the process by the supervisor and then by finance. So one of the things finance does is check calendars and verify that people were absent or sick or, you know, whatever, um, when we're inputting.
Yeah, I was just, cause I really didn't know that much about the board's attention, so, somebody asked you, you can answer one.
Why do you do a time covering incentive?
Um, that's an excellent question, it's just documentation, we, we don't have a, or we have a policy here that's called, um, public accountability, and so if you're absent for more than a certain number of hours during the day, you still have to take sick or vacation. So you would need to claim that, if you were on vacation, you would need to claim that. So we still document it as a control. You know, at cities, they would have it, um, even for exempt employees, because they may have special funding, like in the police department where someone's on a task force, and so that person could be exempt, but they still have to prove that they got paid. Yes. So it's just a common practice that all employees have time cards.
Sure, you do have some.
Yeah, I do. Okay. First one is, um, on, on the page, pages seventeen and eighteen.
Page two on the staff report?
Yeah, page two on the staff report. And pages seventeen and eighteen, when we're talking about the safety award in excellence, um, I don't know if this means it should be in here or not, but it's a comment I had. On different things that we go to, we need to have some kind of recognition, some kind of, uh, something made up, uh, on paper, you know, with a kinda-
Certificate or something?
Yeah, so that we can give proclamations and give, uh, rec, some, something to give out to people, just like we just did the groundbreaking, and it was okay because we didn't have anything, but it was kinda tacky. But we're gonna do it when we have the grand opening, that'll be nicer, but still-
That's what the OCC recycling-
Yes, the OCC, yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, it, it is, when we're invited to something, it is kinda nice to have something for-
Is that going here, or is that under another section?
I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm not sure it'd be under this, but I just wanted to comment on it, uh, you know, so that we might take that into consideration. I don't know if we have to discuss it, or, you know, just-
Yeah, these things, you, you can read what are-
Yeah.
That we thought should come to your attention, you know, we'll just, I think Arlene might have more to highlight.
Yeah, and then on, uh, page three of eleven, and it's pages thirty to thirty-one, on liability claim procedures. Uh, on this, it's interesting to note that, you know, with the police, uh, with the notification of the collisions, and that, and on the very bottom, the question, are employees required to take pictures? You know, and it said yes. Well, you know, we weren't even aware of all of this, but it's interesting, so we just wanted to make the board aware that this, you know-
That they do have procedures there.
Yeah, that there is procedures to follow on something like this.
Well, I think it's interesting, the first one about contacting a police officer in a collision.
Mm-hmm.
My comment to that is good luck.
Yeah, they'll only come if there's an injury.
They'll only come, and a lot of times, even if there's an injury, they'll, they won't, they won't go. I, I mean, I, I run into this on a daily basis. So to require us to call the police, we might want to talk about that.
Yeah.
All they could say is no.
Yeah, they, at least we're notified.
Yeah. Okay, I don't, I don't have a problem with that either. I, again, good luck.
And then on, uh, page six of eleven, employee handbook. The main thing is, I think Art and I both feel that, you know, you need to really look at that employee's handbook because we did. We went through every single page of everything and that's why it took us so long. But there are so many things in there that we didn't know that we, as a board, and thought we knew everything. So it's interesting to, you know, look at that employee handbook. And let's see. I had the time card too, but that was already discussed, so that's that. Oh, and then on, uh, page ten of eleven, on, um, the page one twenty-eight, policy three point four four, defining supervisor. We didn't know the pecking order of who is what really when you come down to it. And so my thought was, and if you all of you would agree, that we need an organization chart because we're getting so many people now in and it's so hard to understand who is over who and what's, and their names and so forth. So anyway, that's my suggestion to the board. What, I'd, I'd like it to come back.
We have an organizational chart that we put in our budget document. And the reason that it's shown in the, the budget document is because when we adopt the budget, that's the positions you've approved. And so unless we come back to the board with new positions, then until there's another budget, of course, I can't find it, then this is the funded positions and the, you know, the pecking order should be according to this.
Is it on our website too?
Yeah, it should be on our website.
It's on our website too, we have an orchard on our website.
It's also recorded by the S S M P.
Right. So, but this is the current, you know, based on the budget you adopted, that's the, the current. So, but it will change if you went, you know, it, so some of these positions are unfunded, but they're still, or they're funded, but they're not filled.
Not filled.
But that doesn't change anymore.
Well, do you think that could be given out again?
Sure, sure, and it is on our website and stuff. Yeah, I can, would you like it emailed to you?
Please.
Okay, I can do that.
Since I'm expecting to remind Arlene, on the same page just below that, um, pages one thirty-four, policy three point four point eight, on drug testing. You know, drug testing parameters, does it list the drugs that are being tested for?
Uh, do they just, they, I'm not sure they do or not, um.
It depends on the authority. The, the authority would list the types of drugs like DOT.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, exactly. Well, I'm, I was just kind of thinking that after November, that will, they have to be revised, depending on how the vote on marijuana goes.
Well, it's, it's, it's saying that alcohol is legal to drink too, but you can't drink when you're driving.
So you wouldn't change that?
No, no.
How when you're working?
No, you can't smoke, you can't smoke it when you're working, just like you can't drink when you're working.
Oh, yeah, I, I, the way you say that makes me, I don't think I can.
Then I think, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, then I think the rest of this, the, the change is to the, all the codes, different handbooks and codes. Scott's retyped up and then, yeah, it's going to be the official document.
Yeah, well, um, I, I do want to mention one thing, uh, if I may, there's one, one change, I, I think off the top of my head, it's on, that the committee did not review and that's on, on page seven, the staff report. It's a new policy on page, um, forty-eight. It's called our closed circuit television inspection pay. As you know, we're, uh, the new fiscal year, we're going to get, uh, a CCTV truck or our CCTV trailer. And, um, to review, to view pipelines, determine the grades based on the National Association of Sewer Service Companies Pipeline Assessment and Certification Program. You need someone trained in that to determine what's a five, what's a four, what's a three. And so we had a couple of staff members that stepped up and said, hey, I want to get trained on that. I want to be the person on the CCTV. And because that's a specialized, um, service, we think it's warranted that, that they would get an additional premium pay of one and a half percent of their base salary. We do that right now for the CWA certification. So every grade they get, so they get one and a half percent. So they get, if they're a grade fours, that's a six percent raise they're getting. In fact, Steve Collins got a grade four, so he's, he's allowed about, well, six percent because of the one and a half percent.
I have a grade five and I didn't get anything.
Yeah, that's engineer, I think it's different, I only have maintenance questions.
I have that down.
And this also.
That's for plant maintenance.
Yes, thank you, it's plant maintenance.
You refuse it anyway, wouldn't you?
I have, I have that down and I passed over.
This class that he attended, it actually teaches them to run the equipment. It's not just, because I was thinking of sending my person and it's not. One person has, not Steve.
Who, who's that?
Brennan Hickman.
But it could be anybody because they need to know how to actually run the equipment. It's not just like what you look at.
We need more than one, they should all probably do it if they're smart.
Well, it's, it's up to them, you know, and it, it gives us, okay, who, who has the initiative? Who wants to take the initiative, make more money and learn more about the profession? So, um, Brennan is, is done it, I think Jesse's going to, wants to do it and Steve's going to do it.
What do they do?
The company that own, that we're buying the equipment from, put it on.
No, not them, but there's also, Steve was here, you would tell, there, there's another, there's training all over that they go to.
It has to be, it's special training.
But it's not just in what you're seeing in the pipe, it's all about the equipment because I wanted to send my staff to. And he said it's not a pay grade because it doesn't tell you what you're seeing in the pipe, it tells you how to run the equipment.
Yeah, we read what's in the.
Um, but just a point of order on this is when these people are getting special pays, special pays are percible. And so, and they're also added on to their overtime here, so it's, you know, it's a different amount.
We could rent them out later to, to other agencies.
Sure. I wanted to, I wanted to make one more comment. We need to really thank Scott because he really put this together. We did a lot of the.
We did the questions.
Yeah, the legwork and, and met together without Scott and then got together with him and he really put this together for us, so.
Who do you want to thank?
It's team effort, everyone has a big key.
He did it, all right, so. Can I, can I address a couple of questions in here though really quickly? Okay, there's on page seven of ten, which I'm not sure we're all on the same numbers.
You're, you're right.
This is page, um, sixty-one, policy two point three point eight retirement. And it says, the committee wanted to know, um, the board of directors pays into social security. The answer is yes, because the board is not enrolled in PERS. So that is definite. But the next one down, the, um, death after retirement benefit. The district pays into L, um, long-term disability and dismemberment, LD.
That's different than this.
L T D.
No, but that's where the five hundred dollar benefit is, it doesn't come from us. The long-term, how do you say that? Long-term disability and dismemberment? Is that right?
Dismemberment, dismemberment's not really used anymore.
Political, okay, it's not, okay. Well, anyway, so the district doesn't actually pay for it, it's actually part of that benefit. And then PERS would have a retirement or would have a, um, two hundred and fifty, two thousand five hundred dollar benefit to a, a percible employee that would do it. So those are the two things.
Before, before you move on to retirement, if you don't mind, um, we still pay into the IC Mark program, right? We're still, I mean, I get to say, the deferred cop.
Yeah, we've, Caitlin's been asking me to research that because, um, I think the district's actually paying that on your behalf, we're not deducting it from.
I don't think you're deduct, I was going to say, I don't think you're deducting the dollar and I think all of us would want to do that.
She wants me to research it because she believes that that is, um, um, makes it invalid if we're paying it for you or something like that. I have to look it up and see.
Oh, really?
We're going to research it.
If, when you research it, if you're going to keep us in a deferred cop, you have to deduct the dollar before you do any other calculations.
Yes.
We're only in the deferred, we're only in the deferred cop because we're in the health thing.
Yes.
Yeah, but, um, we're talking about getting out of.
No, no, right Caitlin, that isn't why we did that. It was so the, everybody else could be in a deferred cop program.
Yeah, I pulled all the previous staff reports and I just haven't had a chance to, you know, start with the beginning of time and go. But I have the staff reports and, uh, Diana in HR, I gave her a copy, so she's researching it. So we'll be able to get back to the board on this.
Would you do me one favor when you're researching that? Right now, we, we do a token dollar deferred cop. Can you research to see if, if I want to put more in that deferred cop, if I could do that? You include that as part of your?
Sure, we can do that, no problem.
I mean, if I'm being taxed on this money, um, I should get the opportunity to put more of it into a deferred situation if I want.
Yeah, we can look that up.
Thank you.
Um, the pre-retirement death benefits, um, so I just wanted to clarify what Scott said is the way it works is if you're a working employee and you pass away, then they just cash you out, okay? They give your beneficiary everything you contributed and the interest you earned on yours. But the amount for the district stays with the district. You do not get that. That is our contribution, that does not go to the employee. So it says down here that yes, that they'll get, they'll receive the employee and employer's contribution plus interest. You only get the employee's share back plus their interest. Ours, our portion that we contributed, um, stays with us. So if you have an employee, you're, you're looking up like you're thinking about that.
Because we were talking about this at SDRMA last week, kind of indirectly, and I was trying to remember what, what I was told there. I think it was basically the same thing, that PERS doesn't, the employer contribution to PERS.
Is the employer contribution.
Is the employer's contribution stays with the employer, which makes, you know, looking up was my wheels turning, so.
So hypothetically, we have some employees here where we pay the employee and employer's share. The employee would still get the employee's share and they would get interest earned on that. And that's cashed out, you know, automatically upon death. Now, if you've actually retired.
Then you get the employer contribution.
Well, if you've retired, then depending on what you signed up for, then your spouse will get, you know, the continued payment if you elected one of those plans or, or it may be that you just didn't elect to give your spouse anything. So then again, you would get cashed out. Um, so that's just to answer and clarify.
And they get, every employee gets that option in terms of how they want the dispersals made, whether they want it joint or individual and they get that choice when they get down to the.
When you're, when you're applying, you're required to make a selection. Um, so like I looked at my paperwork to say, what do I want to do? Do I want to give Mark, you know, twenty-five percent?
Right.
Fifty percent, you know, or whatever that is if something happened to me once I retired.
Did you check the pound sand box down the back?
But so since I'm currently employee, it hasn't, it's not an issue since there's nothing to select. It would automatically go to the beneficiary. And I don't think we have anything else that we, did you have something else I wanted to clarify? The, I, you know, I wanted to, the unauthorized expenses. Um, the, the committee discussed the supplemental insurance on rental cars and the reason why this is considered unauthorized. We just, you know, the employee's insurance, because they're driving the car, should cover them. Um, so we, you're smiling, so is that not correct?
Does that cover the board members too when we get a car?
Well, you have your own insurance, so you're renting a car under your name. So it's, we, we wouldn't have anything to.
If I go to a conference and I rent a car and I have to drive from Oakland Airport to Napa with these two and getting me lost, anyway, so driving from, from Oakland Airport to Napa and I rent that car in my name, but I'm expressly there on a business reason, okay? My insurance company's going to have difficulty covering me since I'm not in a personal use of that vehicle.
Yeah, SDRMA should pick that up.
SDRMA should pick it up if we have our car insured, if we have, if we have that, it's called employer's non-ownership.
Well, I think in reality, when we've had something happen, they've tried to go after the personal insurance first and then they may go after SDRMA.
They will, you're right.
But we don't need the supplemental insurance either way.
I, I'm just going to say, if, if, if SDRMA's extending the, if we're, if we've taken that option for the non-ownership coverage, then we don't need to buy the supplemental insurance when you rent a car.
We should never because we're, we're covered at least two different ways.
And you're right, if you rent a car and you have the coverage you need, if you have the full coverage and you're in a company.
What we've seen in the past is that your insurance company, your personal insurance company says, oh, no, 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 you are on business. And they try and deflect it over there and that, and normally SDRMA or wherever your self-insurance, you know, at cities it varies. We'll pick it up, it's not a problem, it works out fine.
Okay.
I don't take any insurance because I have such good insurance. You know, my Twenty First Century insures me for everything, so I don't take any of the insurance.
Just don't turn in a claim to Twenty First Century.
I have and they pay everything.
You're, you're absolutely right, anybody who buys insurance.
But I, but it was a rental car personally.
Yeah, there's a couple of companies that actually exclude covered on rental cars, but we won't, we won't name the names like Mercury.
Should I, you know, I do, I, I just decline all insurance.
Yeah, and that's what we're, we request.
I'm glad to hear you say that.
Yeah. Thank you, that's all I have, appreciate it.
So at this point, you're going to bring the noted ones back to the next, or to a future study session?
Yes, what we'll do is, no, well, actually what we'll do is we're going to bring this back into your, um, your May board meeting and, um, the code, the, the change in the, in the code will be actually in ordinance. You'll be adopting an ordinance, so, um, Alan will look at that. You'll be basically, um, rescinding the entire ordinance and adopting the, the new ordinance with the changes. And then for the administrative policies and the employee handbook, you'll adopt resolutions for those. And then we send those resolutions and the ordinance with our packet to CSDA for district distinction.
Good job. Yes, that's what we have. Well, thank you, I mean, this was a lot of work.
It was, I committed, uh, yes. Add on. I did most of the work, I just typed it up.
Punch.
No, yeah, I mean, it's, and we do, and this is going to tie in nicely to our district of distinction award.
We worked at perfect timing. That wasn't a great main reason, but that worked out that way.
Yeah, yeah, it's true.
Um, before we get into six and seven, which may take some discussion, can we take two minutes?
Perfect, yes.
Jim's fine, he forgot the meeting.
Judith would like to speak in the public comments.
He said, I, oh shit, I didn't have it down.
So we're going to go ahead and do that now before we do the others.
He says, I needed somebody to call me and nobody called.
If you want, come back up. And, you know.
She usually does.
I do.
So I was just curious about the supplemental environmental project for your, um, regional board action, whether that was still in play. Because I've been holding off on, uh, certifying restaurants in Costa Mesa area because I don't want it to affect whether they would say yes, this would be a viable SEP. So I was just curious, I think you guys have made a determination because I, um, haven't been invited back to make a stronger presentation on it. But I understand that, you know, it's still in play with your, uh, regional board thing, so I would like to know what's going on.
I'm not sure how much we can indulge at this point.
Well, I think she's just, she's leaving direction, are we going to do it or not? I think that's what.
Yeah, just want to know.
If we're not going to do it, then she'll, she'll move on, we need to make a decision. Let's just tell her yes or no, we're going to do it.
We don't know what's going to happen.
What's going to happen with this.
Yeah, but I, I'm just saying, true, but even if it does happen, I, I, I think she's not getting any claims, we're going to go with her SEP.
Yeah, I think what we sort of focused on, if, if, if it ends up being a SEP, um, we've looked at some environmental issues in Fairview Parks especially, that we're probably going to, or, I, I can't say probably, that's what we've discussed.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think we can do any of those previous ones.
Yeah, I would also say that, um, the regional board is likely to not accept that as a SEP because it has no relation to, because I used to work for one of the regional boards and I did look through that extensively because I was aware of the issue with Fairview Park. So, um, yeah, I'm, I don't, I'm a volunteer with this program, so I mean, but it would be great to get the funding and like I said, it directly affects and helps block programs and makes it stronger going forward, that you can put it in your S S M P as well, that you are partnering and doing this additional outreach and education as an incentive program, where it's not a compliance, you guys are on the compliance side. Surf writer is on the incentive side and it's being very well, um, the restaurants love it. You know, I mean, we've got Facebook set up and everything and they're, you know, they're happy with the program and everything, so, um, I would just like, you know.
I, I think what I would like to do, Scott, is, um, at the next board meeting, I go two weeks out, but, uh, could we have Alan? We're going to, I assume have a closed session on progress with.
I don't know, we don't, I don't know if we have one.
I thought we talked today, but I didn't know that.
I think we did, I don't, I think, Allison, we could put, we could, if you want to close it, we can put one on there.
Well, it's probably good to have it on there because.
Let's have it on there and I, I want to ask Alan some questions regarding the S S, S S M P and this program before we invite Judith back to do a presentation.
Mr. President, as duty said, the program does have to qualify for the state water board. So you may want to have a one or two in mind or a list or whatever, just so whatever you decide, you have options, should it not work out.
Okay, but I think, once we do that and. Okay, but I think, once we do that and we, and I want to talk to Alan about it, then we can let you know whether we want you back to do a fuller presentation. That way you're not on your phone and.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Like I said, I don't want them looking at like, oh, it's something that's being done already. So that's why I've been holding off and just working the other side. Thank you.
We haven't even discussed it. We don't know what we are liability wise.
Yeah, so, but thank you for your persistence. I appreciate that. Okay, then I'm going to close public comments again and go to item number six.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Board request this item to place on today's agenda because of the latest news we learned from the Orange County Sanitation District and our partnership project, program with them on the West Side Pump Station Abandonment Project. As you know, the last, I think it was last week, OCSD's staff was presenting to their operations committee the new budget for this program, for this project. And on OCSD's side, their budget is increasing from fourteen million to twenty-six million dollars on their side. And our side's about seven million dollars. So, you know, you're looking at, you know, a thirty, thirty-two million dollar project. They pulled the item from the meeting because the chair and the vice chair wasn't there. But, so that was the main reason why. But the, what I'm hearing over there now is they're getting cold feet and they're.
I felt the feet.
Yes, pretty cold, wasn't it?
And their back is yellow.
What's that?
And they lift up their shirt and their backs are yellow.
They're not comfortable presenting this size, that cost to their, to their elected officials. They're getting the feeling that it's just not going to be cost effective to spend twenty-six million dollars on this project. They're also very concerned about the tunneling underneath the San Ana River. It's very complicated.
Do you have our managers?
Not so much. I think, you know, that's, you know, with the, the couple of.
Maybe more of the construction.
Yeah, more of the construction.
Potential construction.
Yeah.
And that's the reason. They had a major lawsuit when they went, last time they tried this method going under the San Ana River. They, there was underground flowing sand that just upset the contractor and everything and major litigation. So this is, would only be the, this would be the next time they tried it. So there's that aspect.
And there's only a few cultures can do that kind of work too, right? So, so, so I, I, while I was talking to their general manager, I said, okay, fine, you know, you know, pull it, but let's get some closure on this project. Are you going to approve it? Yes or no? And he assured me they're going to put it on their June operations committee, but the recommendation might change. The recommendation might be not fund this project. Previously it was supporting the project, but now it may not support it. So with that, in anticipation of them not supporting it, I've directed Rob and Steve to come up with a budget to rehabilitate our five pump stations and our force mains. And so they will, they will come back with that number in the near future.
What do you, what do you think your number would be?
Well, there was, thank you. We, we had told everybody that it was actually cheaper to do the abandonment than it was to do what we were, what we were going to have done. However, that included two major capacity expansions, one in Wilson and one in Victoria's. And those were just based on existing zoning. But assuming those don't occur, those were the only gravity lines and we're redoing our model and I'm assuming we're not going to need to do those capacity projects. So it would just be the pump stations and force mains. I don't have the number. I didn't bring it to this meeting. We have to sit down and go through all those numbers. We have, we have most of the numbers because we had to do that as part of justifying that 101 was cost effective. So we have the numbers. We, you know, this word only hit the bus last week, at the end of the week. So we can go along those lines. And Scott was not sure whether we should start going down that road or whether we should wait another month. Maybe you want us to get more prepared or less, or not prepared or what?
My only thinking was if, where if the project's going to be denied and we have the money there, and I just need to know your figures that you think, is it going to be over three million dollars to repair those stations?
Uh huh.
I will.
Yeah, it was, we were probably, I, I'll have to pull out the numbers. I have it on the simple spreadsheet and I can send it over to Scott later today.
Could we maybe talk about it at the board meeting? Does that give you enough time?
Uh huh.
Well, their numbers are all gone.
I know, that's what I mean. But if, because I was thinking that if it's going to be over three million dollars, then my, my thought was, if, I thought it was under, then we could use part of that money to, for the law.
Well, let's put it this way, we were doing something that was going to save us money.
Yeah.
But it, so it was like, one, here's the capital cost was equal to what we would have done if we didn't do the project. And then we save over the years.
Save over the years.
It's not like if we don't do the project, we get to keep all the money and not spend it.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's what I was asking. Before we bring it to a board meeting though, don't, I'd rather see this on the June study session because the oper, what the operations committee had met by then.
Yeah, that's my recommendation is wait, let's, let's wait till the, till the OCSDs show their hands. What is it, what's the decision they're going to make and then we move forward.
Yeah, but I was just looking at, I was just asking for the total of the, of the rehabilitated. I think at the next study session, I would like to have that on the agenda.
We could review the numbers.
We could definitely, because they're meeting the first Thursday in June. I mean, the first Thursday in June or first Wednesday in June and then we, then our study session is on Tuesday, so it's, it's fine.
You okay with that?
Yeah, that's true. Because those numbers also included abandoning the, those stations and, you know, it was a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollar cost for the six stations and that doesn't need to be done in most, but anyway.
We can wait till the June.
Mike, are you back by then?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think fundamentally, Scott, we've got to meet with Herbert and, and right, right away because they, they told us, Jim and I and you, that this was a regional, that this was their regional responsibility. So to do this project, I mean, it was, it was Herbert that told me about it, you know, because he knew that they had abandoned this project back in the, in the mid nineties. We also have to get with them, you know, to, I think we signed an agreement that they're going to give us back that million bucks that we've already got invested in the ground in, in order for us to let them out of this project. For one, their policies, you know, they're being the regional provider. I don't think they can necessarily get out without us just saying, okay, giving them a wink and, you know, we, we go away and, you know, it's good for us. I don't care if they have cold feet or yellow backs. You know, they're the ones that brought this project up and we've invested considerably in this and we invested in ninety-five in this project. And so we've got to meet with them pretty quickly and say, this is the criteria for us, you know, just to let you, let you, let you have your, have your cold feet and keep on going and become, still be the general manager over there.
Okay, I'll, I'll, today I'll, we can try to schedule a meeting.
Thank you, Bob.
That's good.
I didn't, I forgot that. That's, I think that's very salient.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's part of, Robert, you probably already have this, that is part of this getting the costs and things together. Can you give us an idea too of the priority on which stations?
Oh, yeah.
We've already, we've already talked about.
I thought, I thought you guys had pretty much hammered that anyway, so.
I think President's the oldest one.
Yeah, what's interesting is that how the environmentalists were telling us how we're going to disrupt that park. Wait until they see this, we're going to be going all over the place.
You know, you take one project under, under Talbot Park and now we're going to have how many projects in different parts of the city that have a much bigger environmental impact?
Absolutely.
But it'll, it'll, they don't care. It'll fly completely under the radar because that group of, those, those guys are, we're not messing up their park.
Right.
Exactly. I hate to be that way, but that's.
Well, let them help us fund the damn thing.
It's not going to help them. So you have, we need to go, I think?
Yeah, I need to go. I have a direction on, on item six, so.
Correct, so.
Yeah.
Item seven.
Wait, before we move on, gut feeling is we're going to abandon the city event.
Yeah.
If, no.
That's why, that's, we'll get better chipoties on it. My gut feeling is they're going to say no.
Well, I don't care what they say, no. We, we need to talk to them in order to put the asset aside, letting them say no.
Yeah, exactly.
Otherwise we go there and say, you look, when, when they're going to own up to being the regional provider, they've done these regional projects for about six agencies already. So Midway Sanitary District and others, you know, they came in and they were groveling and they, and they, and then Orange County Sand District did it for them. They didn't put that in their staff report. They didn't put the history of, you know.
Good argument. Sorry.
Well, I talked to Rob Thompson when he was doing it. He said, I'll let you review the staff report. And I said, you know.
There you go. Yeah, yeah. Take him along for sure.
Do you know anybody that has any intimate knowledge about those other projects?
Bob does.
Bob, yeah. Bob's a, Bob's our man.
And he did them under duress, but because they were the regional provider, they did them. And because Margie Rice brought it and they just went through the, went through the thing licking.
Yeah, take Margie too.
Margie's, Margie's got some damn much.
Margie's dynamite.
My granddaughter, last Friday night, performed at the Margie Rice Rose Auditorium in Westminster.
Really? Oh, they love her.
Yeah, I don't fault Margie. She does everything.
I just.
No, she's just aggressive person like you.
Yeah.
All right, then let's move to item seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Wendy's going to present to you a proposal to appropriate five hundred thousand dollars from Project 101 to start funding our grade fives. Line segments, as I think you saw in my last weekly update, we found another, another batch of videos. We found thirty-six additional grade fives. We think it's continuing. So rather than wait for the entire CCTV program to be done, which is next year, and then come up with a budget which can be huge, our position, staff's position and Rob's in agreement with this is that we start tackling now head on because they're grade fives. So Wendy, I almost forgot about Wendy for a second, but she's got a proposal that will fund, I think, five hundred thousand for the next two years. Is that right? So we'll have a million dollars in the next two years to take care of these grade fives. So Wendy, you want to?
Do we get that money reimbursed?
What's left?
Do we get that money reimbursed?
Why isn't this money coming out of the asset management program? That's, this is rehab and rehabilitation and that's what the asset management program helped devise funding system for.
You're talking about, like, because we don't have enough money set aside yet.
We've got five and a half million. We've got six million.
Well, no, that's, yeah, but, but that's our, our bottom is our five million and we don't have like six million.
When we did this asset management program, we'd set five million and if it went down below, you know, then we had to figure out how to bring it back up. It isn't even below yet.
No, it's not below, but I'm, I, I don't know the exact balance, but I want to say it's about five and a half million because the only thing that's in there is interest. So I can, I can pull off the interest, but what I think is more prudent to do is if we shift, what I'm proposing here on the sheet that you have in front of you is, and I've, I've just left the projects that will extend past June thirtieth. Rob's got a lot of projects that I've hidden on the sheet because he's going to be wrapping them up shortly. So, you know, Eldon and all of those, they're going to be finishing up. So basically going forward into the next fiscal year, he's just going to have the Victoria pump, Force Main, because that's a new project. And he's going to have the Force Main, the project two hundred Force Main at South Coast Plaza and Harbor Boulevard. So those are the two projects that are going forward. So we just approved the budget for the Geesler and Rob came up with fifty-seven thousand dollars to get some of the grade fives started that they found in the first batch of CCTVs. So our problem is if we're penny, you know, just throwing pennies at this problem until we can appropriate the whole thing when it's done, one, it'll cost us more because we may have to fix some things. But two, it's not appropriate for us to keep awarding these small, you know, things that look like we're, you know, not using our policies appropriately. That we should bid this, get a vendor, you know, for a large project and, and have them on the line to do this. So that's a purchasing issue that makes it look like we're adhering to our policies. The five hundred thousand coming from Project 101 right now, you can, I took it from that highlighted area and moved it down to the five fifty-seven. And I would do the same thing in the next year because that budget's already adopted, but the total stays the same. And so even with doing all that, you can see that I can still meet the funding for this project by the time the project is anticipated to start, if it's a go. So I haven't heard this project at all, but I'm, I'm moving money to more immediate needs. And with reducing the amount that we would need per year for this project, then there'll be money to do other projects. So I think this is kind of, you know, we're meeting our 101 goal on time, but we still have money to do other things. They, they have the time and the ability to do the grade fives right now. And I would like to see us shift that five hundred thousand.
I think we should proceed with the grade fives post haste. You know, Hart and I were, been a big fan of doing the grade fives. And the last time it took three years, you know, five years to do the grade five. I think this is an appropriate means, but when Scott and staff have done projects that were supposed to come from the asset management program in the past, it included the grade fives projected. So my, my, you know, I strongly believe that the asset management funding is the place to allocate those things. We already have that fund.
But see.
And I think, I think it sends the wrong message to Orange County Sand District for us to start, you know, siphoning money out of this, this project.
You know, and I disagree because they've, they've changed the parameters. If, if this project was going to be funded in seventeen eighteen, then I would totally be on board with you. That this would be, you know, I need the money year after next. I get that. But the project has changed your, you know, duration, so now I'm appropriately doing that. Here's the bottom line difference of taking the money from the asset management versus the sewer fund. If I take the money from, make a transfer from the asset management to the sewer fund to fund these.
Rehab projects.
The grade fives, then I have reduced the amount of interest and earnings that are there for potential bigger projects. And I have this huge amount of cash sitting in the sewer fund doing nothing that will be siphoned off to be used for, you know, immaterial maintenance and things like that. So as my financial preferences, I like to keep that money in that fund where the interest goes back to that and grows and can be used for a big bulk project as opposed to three point two or five million dollars sitting in the sewer fund, earning interest for the sewer fund that goes to new shirts or, you know what I mean? Some, you know, things that we don't.
Why don't we just, or give it back to the ratepayers who we took it from in order to do this project? But the problem is, is we need, at one time, we were building this fund to do this project and, and it nearly was offset by the projects that we weren't going to do. You know, we weren't going to have to deal with those five, six pump stations, whatever they were. You know, I, I, I'm not, I'm not in favor of this because we have a fund that the asset managed, definition of asset management is to do rehab and rehabilitation projects.
And I understand that, but okay, so then if I have five million dollars there, I could transfer it and fund this whole project and let it sit there in the sewer fund from now till.
We don't have the answers to any of those questions right now.
Well, I know, so.
I mean, maybe we will by June.
Can we wait on this item until June?
Well, I don't know.
I mean, can we wait one, you know, it's only next month. Because well, you'll have a better determination of what 101's going.
How soon will the CCTV be done?
It's going to be, it's a two-year project.
So we got half of it, so we, so.
So, so we're going to, our, our plan was rather than wait for three to five years, we.
I, I, all of us in agreement that we're not going to wait.
Okay, we're not going to wait.
Okay, so you're, the disagreement is how to fund it.
Yes.
That's the disagreement. And I think, I, I, and I, and I think we're, we're, I like what Wendy's plan is because she's shown you a plan that we can take five hundred thousand dollars from Project 101 and by the time the product, if assuming OCSD approves the project, we will still fund it. We'll still have it totally funded by twenty twenty-one.
There's obviously some bantering and maybe some disagreement.
I think it's really the same money. The money for 101 came from the place that Director Uden is asking to pay for the grade fives. It went from the, it went from the ratepayers to the asset management fund to 101. And now Wendy's saying, because 101 is so far out there, we just take that out and we'll replace it over the years.
Well, again, we, we can sit here and discuss it and go with the merits. I think this warrants taking it to the board meeting in two weeks and let's make a decision.
Well, we can't make a decision today.
No, we cannot.
Sure we can.
No, no, it would be, it's a five hundred thousand dollar transfer, so I would need board approval in two weeks, so that's what it, can I ask a question, though? So my other alternative for funding this would be, I wait till July first, because we've already appropriated that budget, and it's a budget of, there's like, for the 101 project, it's one million four hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So then I would come back and, in July first, and ask you for a million.
Yeah.
Because I wanna take five from each.
Right.
But I wanted, you know, because we're wrapping up projects and bidding and stuff, we wanted to get started on it as soon as possible. So is that what you'd like to see as an alternative suggestion on the board report?
If, if you wanna do that, I, I, I think you're not gonna get any argument, you are, I think it's done, we've demonstrated that no one's opposed to going forward with this project, we just need to figure out the funding. And if we can do that on May twenty-eighth, and give you direction, then I think.
Okay. So I'll just throw out some options.
If you wanna put an option in there, that never hurts.
A recommendation's still gonna be what you got today.
Yeah, I understand.
And, and for, you can take action today, I mean, you can take action in your study sessions, you know, it's just a.
We have two each.
It'll be.
But you don't have to, you know.
It could be two to two.
You can take an action.
You know, from a president's standpoint, we tended not to make decisions at study sessions, and I kinda think we oughta stay.
Yeah, and it's not gonna make a difference to us, you know, for two weeks, that, that was our plan.
Engineering can't be done here for another eight months, well, if you got that many grade fives.
Well, and one of the things that you'll get also in that time will be his, how much it's gonna cost him for the pump station upgrades. So I think, you know, in putting all the pieces together, that, you know, money's gonna be shifting around if the project doesn't go, it may shift, you know, to his and the grade fives, and, you know, so I, I think it's, you know, this is just one small component, and, and then there'll be other pieces of the puzzle brought out later.
Then can you have that ready for the board meeting, Rob, the cost of rehabilitation of those pump stations? I mean, I know we're gonna do the study session, but Wendy's talking about.
We've already done it, it just matters.
I mean, do you have that at the?
We have something for it, and Rob gave a comment.
Well, let me just take a quick step back, because, well, first of all, we are doing grade fives. The first batch is, already went out to bid, was awarded, contract signed, they're starting yesterday.
Yesterday.
And the second batch is out to bid, just wanna go over the engineering real quickly, just for transparency. So what we're doing is, the operator in the truck, every time he sees a grade five, he puts it on a thumb drive. He gives that thumb drive to Steve. Steve, myself, and Joe Lamont, all look at it, and we say, does this need something immediately? And then, when we all agree, that it goes, the answer is yes. And then we take those thumb drives, and we're talking about a specialized product. This is a short liner. It's, people who don't have a license for a short liner would call it a sectional CIPP, it's just a short piece of liner. But nobody can compete with this method. So we've gone out to the five bidders we know in the region that have a license for that product. So we are getting incredibly low cost, we're saving the cost of plans and specification, and we're getting the work done immediately. And we're seeing some things that need to be done immediately, they are great times. So from an engineering and follow-through standpoint, we are bidding, we are saving money, and we're getting the work out the door. So that part's working very well.
Yeah, I, I.
I just wanted to throw that out there, so you know.
You know, I don't think, I, I think there's a lot of agencies that can take big lessons from us.
Right.
I mean, we've been proactive, and, I mean, ever since I've been on the board the second time, these two guys especially have been so proactive on this, I don't think we'll ever see us in a major situation, and we've had some, obviously, but there's a lot of agencies that could learn some big le, you knocking on wood.
That's very superstitious.
A lot of agencies that could learn some big lessons from what you guys have done.
And, and they can even look at how we finance it.
Well, we're not sure about that.
So, so from a cost-effective standpoint, and getting the work done, it couldn't be faster and couldn't be lower cost, because if we grouped them all together, and did a project, that would take time, engineering costs, bidding time, something could happen. So it couldn't be done any less expensive or more quickly.
How, how many have we dealt with in the first two contracts?
There's twenty-five, no, there's.
First one was twenty-five, and this one's thirty-six, right, so, you know, so.
And that, do you have any guesswork on the?
Well, we're, we're paying, we're paying approximately a thousand dollars a repair. And probably, five or six years ago, we were, got a below cost, this is five or six years ago, a below cost introductory look at these for thirteen and fourteen hundred dollars each, and that, and if you do it by itself, it's over two thousand. So we're, we're, we're a thousand or less, and we're, we have the right guys doing the job.
And we CCTVed approximately a hundred and seventy thousand square feet so far.
Linear feet.
Or no.
Hundred, hundred, yeah, hundred, sorry, that's linear feet, sorry.
Hundred and seventy out of six hundred.
One point two million.
Yeah, one point two million, yeah.
Well, I mean, we're only doing half this year, so.
Right, so it's got about, what, ten percent now, I think, we've done about, about ten percent so far.
Okay, it's hundred and seventy over six hundred, that's almost a third.
No, he used to definitely get a hundred million, gross sales of.
One point two million.
One point two million.
Well, that's the whole system.
Yeah.
And we're only doing half this time, so it's six hundred thousand.
Right.
And we've done a hundred and seventy thousand, and we've gotten sixty.
Then half is not, you know, they'll keep going, you know.
Yeah.
It's, you know, they, they won't stop and then come back July first, if they're moving along, then we'll shift money to keep them moving along. But they're gonna be out of, we, Rob found some money to do these first grade fives, and it was only fifty-seven thousand. So they spent twenty-five thousand on the first batch, and now they're out to bid on those, so if it's more than thirty-two, then.
I can find some more money to keep it going till the end of the fiscal year, but.
Oh, we have the asset management. Apparently we're gonna save.
But, well, I think that we're arguing about the same money, and that we're okay either way.
Okay.
All right, so then we'll have that on.
Yes, we'll put it on, on the May agenda.
Uh, future study, any other oral communications, or, I'm sorry, any future study session items?
Jim, Jim suggested at the last board meeting that we bring up the insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah, the health insurance.
On the May agenda.
It's on the May agenda.
Board meeting.
Oh, good, good.
Well, I also, I think we need to have me, we needed to meet with the Orange County Sand District ASAP.
I've got it, I've got it today, I'm trying to set it up today.
Did you and Jim and Scott and Ross?
Oh, when you meet, when you talk to him, tell him, you know, they're looking at a a means of stripping carbon dioxide out of the digestive gas, and, and they've got some big proprietary things. CRR's got one out here, that I wanna tell him about. They're just gonna put down a patent or something on the back of it, and both are, you know, both were yellow and were wooden.
And then, when is CRR's plant and terrace gonna be functionable?
They said June eighth was the date.
June eighth.
Yes.
Twenty sixteen.
Maybe at our next study session, we should talk about, maybe, Scott, maybe talk about tours.
A tour, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We were talking about November.
Good.
And one item I'd like on the study session, of course, would be the request from Mesa Water, to talk at the next study session, a preliminary discussion on, on.
Scheduling.
Scheduling our meetings and doing whatever research we're gonna do. I have not sent a letter to Mr. Dwayne yet, and I'll try to have a tea by Friday, Scott, we had to look at it.
Sure.
Or should you wait until we discuss it?
No, I, I think I need, like we said before, I think I need to respond to him and say, we're gonna be looking at this, and we'll, we'll be back to you.
Take it under advisement.
We're taking it under advisement, and we'll be back to you. And please don't send letters to staff members anymore without, with the general manager.
I think I would send it, I have it perched.
If my brother was still working there, I could've sent it to my brother.
I'll send it to him anyway.
Anything else?
Have him take it in.
Okay. Um, any other oral communications or director comments? All right, and we'll adjourn. That's good, thank you.
I appreciate you guys sending it.
Thanks, Rob.